All right, I'm calling the Tuesday, October 7th, 2025 meeting of the East Long Meadow Planning Board. Order. Those in attendance are.
Pete Henderson.
Bill Fonseca.
Russell Denver.
Robert Rowe.
And Rob Woodchill, Director of Planning.
So I'm required to ask if there's anyone in the audience who might be recording this meeting or on Zoom. So would you please state your name and the method you are recording?
Raymond Petuno. Good time, Court reporting stenographically.
Thank you, sir. All right, first order of business, the approval of the September 3, 2025 meeting.
So moved.
Mr. Chair, actually, it's the October 21st.
What are we looking at?
Minutes.
Oh, I got it here. October 21st.
Yeah. And then a dental dentist? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Approval of the October 21st, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have an approval not required A and R. There has been a request. Withdraw that at this time. Have a motion to accept the withdrawal.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? So on the motion to withdraw the request for the properties at 22 and 30 Allen Street, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose hearing none. So that passes. We are scheduled between 6:00 and 6:30 for a presentation by Ken Comier. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
Aye.
And if you'll recall from the last meeting, the new public hearing for 3:30 Chestnut Street will begin at 6:30.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Board, and good evening, everyone. So my name is Ken Comier. I'm the Director of Land Use and Environment at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Back in East Long Meadow, I was here a couple of years ago in a virtual, when the town was doing the Resilient Master Plan, in addition to supporting the town in various methods and various projects over time, over the past couple of years that I've been at the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. So it's great to come back and kind of see this particular project to some sort of completion. This has been something that's been ongoing probably since 2022, so maybe two planning directors before Rob. And both Rob and Rebecca Lisi at the town, you know, were working together to try to get the town's approval of the housing production plan. Next slide, please. I just wanted to start with the context of the state's definition of affordable housing. It counts towards the 10% minimum under Chapter 40B. We'll talk about Chapter 40B at the next slide. Affordable to households with income at or below 80% of the area moving income, or AMI, as determined by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and housing that is safe, suitable for the size of the household living in it, and protected by a long-term deed restriction. So as the board may know, the affordable housing, the next slide also we'll share. The state has a definition for affordable housing. East Long Meadow has a role in regards to the state's goal for affordable housing. And with that said, that is all under the guidelines of Chapter 40B. And as I mentioned, with the particular goal of at least having 10% of the affordable, of the housing stock on the subsidized housing inventory. So in East Long Meadow, 400, this is in accordance with the 2020 census, because that's how the state calculates the subsidized housing inventory. In the 2020 census, there were 6,340 total units, and of those 452 were on the housing inventory. So the town's percentage of in the subsidized housing inventory is 7.13, which is under 10%. Next slide. With regards to a housing production plan, why create and adopt one? You're addressing unmet housing needs of low and moderate income residents in the community, influencing type, amount, and location of where those particular units are, assisting the communities with meeting the state mandate requiring 10% of total year-round housing to be affordable. And that's with a capital A. We hear about lowercase affordable. We hear about uppercase affordable. And in this case, uppercase affordable is the one that is measured by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. And another reason why towns typically create and adopt a housing production plan, possibly preventing unwanted 40B development through a certified housing production plan. What does the plan consist of? It consists of data, which we're going to go over some slides, the next couple of slides, an assessment of housing need and demand based on the current data and population growth and trends. Limitations, which we'll say for a future meeting, and analysis of geographic and regulatory constraints, locations, which is where the town may want to see the types of housing, goals, housing goals, including an annual numeric housing production target and strategies, how we're going to get there. Where we are with regards to the timeline, as I mentioned, I probably have approached the board either through Zoom or in person, probably since 2021. This is in regards to, again, the conversations we've been having, or the town has been having in regards to housing, both through the Resilient Master Plan and through this Housing Production Plan update. So what has been done to date? We now have 2024 numbers for quantitative and qualitative data on housing demographics. We do have drafts of the introduction, housing assessment, and housing development conditions chapters, which the board and the town will have the opportunity to review as part of the community review process. The town does have master plan identified strategies under housing. As you know, housing is an element of the master plan that towns typically will address. And the town is undergoing zoning and regulatory review efforts at the moment. So just a quick slide about total population. For this, East Long Meadow, as you probably are feeling, and you probably experience in your day-to-day life, continues to grow. The current population, according to the American Community Survey estimates for 2022, which is the last number based on the 2024 numbers, is 16,361. This marks a 4.14 increase in population since 2012. Like many communities in the Pioneer Valley and throughout New England, the population of East Long Meadow is aging. And you can see that 21.9% of East Long Meadow's population is over the age of 65. And that's in the little table on the right side. Where in comparison to Hampton County, it's about 18.3%, and the state at 18.0. This next slide. With regards to median income, the ability to exercise housing trace bears a strong relationship to the amount of money household can afford to spend on housing. So, you know, I think it's intuitive when you look at housing data for the median income and what that may or may not be able to afford. And you'll see later on the slide, some perceptions of that. The median income household in East Long Meadow is 101,570, significantly higher than Hampton County and slightly higher than Massachusetts. At the same time, the poverty rate in East Long Meadow is significantly lower and at a 3.5%. Next slide. As part of this needs assessment, we also look at the housing stock in town. The size of the housing stock in East Long Meadow has grown consistently throughout time, although since the Great Recession, at a smaller rate between 2000 and 2010, when the period between 2000 and 2010 saw an addition of 743 units, a 14% increase. The number of units added between the years of 2010 and 20 was smaller at 4.3 increase, or 265 units. The age of a town's housing stock in areas with concentrated numbers of older housing, which is the bottom little table there, is important to note, too. According to the latest data from the American Community Survey, 37.7% of all housing units were built after 1977. Another type of assessment that is part of the housing production plan is measuring housing costs as a percentage of household income. Households are considered cost burdened when they spend more than 30% of their income on rent, mortgage, and other housing needs. Households which spent over 50% of the income on housing-related costs are considered severely cost burdened. The more income that must be spent on housing costs, the less that can be spent on other essential and non-essential expenses. But this is here in East Long Meadow, over 30%, 30% of, 29.1% of the units that are owned, those particular households pay 30% of their income on housing. And whereas in the case of rented units, it's about 47%. Next slide, please. So you may have seen a community survey go around. We closed the survey Friday, I'll say. We might have some stragglers as far as hard copies that could still be submitted that we can include in the final number. But in accordance with Friday, we have 240 survey responses that were filled out in full. There were 377 total, but they were incomplete. However, you know, we'll send over that data to the town as necessary. The next couple of slides are some summaries of those data points that I think will be helpful for some of the next conversations that we'll have, or the town will have with regards to the housing production plan. Just some other little tidbits regarding the community survey. 55.6% of the responses were from the age of respondents 35 to 54. So that's half, more than half of the respondents were from that particular age range. 69% of the responses were from those who've lived in town for more than 10 years. You don't necessarily need to see this, but we'll make sure that we share this with the planning director, with the planning board. What types of housing do you think East Long Meadow needs more of? And just in summary, this particular table shows that 33.2% say accessory dwelling units is one of the top answers. Housing for seniors or older adults at 31.5%. And then starter homes for first-time buyers, 42% of respondents say that. Again, you could apply, you could check, follow that up by. So this again is a summary of the responses, and it focuses mostly on the housing needs. There were other questions in this particular survey that were related to probable strategies. The next slide, please. Which groups face the greatest difficulty finding suitable housing in town? 58.2% was one of the top vote-getters. The question asked for select up to three young adults or first-time homebuyers, older adults looking to downsize, and lower-income residents as the top three vote-getters. Next slide. As I mentioned earlier, East Long Meadow currently has 7.13% of its housing stock as deed-restricted affordable units. So those are in your subsidized housing inventory. The state goal is 10%. This particular question asked, the town or the suggested responses for the town should include take stronger action to meet the 10% affordable housing goal, and that was 35%. Take no further action at 30%, and not sure, at 17.3%. Would you support the following strategies to increase housing opportunity in town? So this particular question had 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 full responses, and then you had the opportunity to respond with other. The board and the planning director will have the responses that were filled out for other. But I think you'll note here that with regards to strongly supporting strategies, developing senior housing near services were the ones that reflected 35% of the responses, either strongly support or somewhat support. You'll see that converting older homes into 2.3 units of housing was opposition. There was an opposition to that, 55%. An opposition to 50.9% opposition to expanding zoning to multifamily housing. And then you can see some of the other vote-getters under that. Establishing a town-wide inclusionary zoning bylaw was neutral at 32.8% of the respondents. Where should East Long Meadow focus new housing development? The top vote getter was on large parcels with underutilized land, followed by on empty or underlots in existing neighborhoods, so what we call infill development. Then followed by nowhere. The town is already built out. One of the questions also asked, do you think East Long Meadow is affordable for? And as you'll see here, you know, I think the majority of the various population groups, first-time buyers, people with disabilities, seniors on fixed incomes, the majority of the respondents said no, that East Long Meadow is not affordable for those populations, and that somewhat. 51.3% for working families. Do you know someone who has left or considered leaving East Long Meadow because of housing costs? We may have your own experiences here in the audience, but according to the survey, 53% said yes. So that's about 126 respondents. Next slide. So where we are with regards to sharing this particular data with the community, with the board, the board will get this PowerPoint, in addition to the survey report, which has all of the questions that, you know, from there, the board can post that to the website, and the town can have access to all of the questions from the survey. But as I was talking with the planning director and the deputy town manager, some of the next steps include a discussion of housing constraints. That's your land, that's zoning, regulatory. Obviously, you're doing some contemplations on that at the town level with some of your zoning work. In addition to reviewing what housing development strategies are already listed in your master plan. So revisiting those and seeing if they still make sense with the context of this housing production plan for the town and the board to review the plan. And then I should provide some context here. Submit to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities usually while we're in a review process. So while the town is in a review process, we suggest that it be sent to the EOHLC to review for form, to review that has all the components. Usually, they give a green light, then it comes back to the town, and the town goes through its proper review process and documents that. That's a review by the planning board and an approval by the planning board and the town council. So those are the next steps with regards to this particular project. And I'm giving any questions? Question?
Is Pioneer Valley have a method threshold?
1, 2, 3, 4.
Out of how many?
In Hampshire and Hampton County, 43. There's 43 communities. I think, there might be, I think, five or, I think there might be five.
Five out of 43?
Right.
Okay. You showed stats that said our poverty rate was 3.5%, but our affordable housing was a little over 7. So where does then the threat of 40B come in?
I think it just comes in because the town, to demonstrate how additional units can either be added to the subsidized housing inventory to meet the 10%, because that is the threshold by which the state measures whether or not a 40B would be legitimate in a town. towns that are past the 10% oftentimes can say, I got 10%, you can't touch me. Or, you know, we have a process that will go through to look at that. I think there are communities that may have identified additional units where landlords may want to be increasing or adding deed-restricted units to the inventory, but that is the measurement that the state uses for the subsidized housing inventory.
And in the Pioneer Valley, what was the last successful 40B project jumped down some communities' throat?
The last 40B project that I think that has come to the valley was Town of Pelham. They have a 40B project there.
And the number of units in Pelham, and what was the population in Pelham?
Population's a little over 1,000. The number of units for that 40B project is about 40.
What's the median income there?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Okay. Other questions, the board?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. So we have nine minutes until the hearing is supposed to begin at 3:30 Chestnut Street. So I advise that we take a, we can do the director's report.
Yes, we can. Mr.
Think about 40 hours in the sky.
Yeah, yes.
Don't think about 40 hours in the sky.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we definitely do that. Let me just find the director's report real quick.
You have a mic there, too?
Yep. I'll grab it in one sec. So we're going out of order today and starting with the director's report before the public hearing, which is a wise move. So we have our schedule, three upcoming meeting dates. At the next November 18th, I was going to put on the board's agenda to approve the 2026 meeting date schedule, just so we can start getting more meeting dates on this list, and you can all put that on your calendars. I don't have any potential upcoming public moments, but we have received some submissions. One was for special permits. I still have to review it. It's not yet a complete application. As for upcoming events, we don't really have anything on the docket for the time being. Just two updates from the planning department in terms of projects. The mixed-use bylaw has been tabled to the December 9th, 2025 Town Council meeting. It was on the agenda for this previous meeting, but the council decided to move it to December 9th. And then the traffic and pedestrian survey reports. I'm actually wrapping up this report as we speak, and it should be completed by next week for public view, and the town council will be looking at it at their meeting next week. Other news, last week, town management met with members of the planning team at VHB to discuss end-up properties for a 3D model rendering showing what typical mixed-use development would look like. The goal is to create visuals to show what different levels of density can look like on a single property. So I believe that they're looking at about three to four properties. Two of them are well over an acre. I believe one of them is potentially the heart of Monday building, but I could be wrong about that. And then two of them are undersized properties. So they're giving people renderings that we can use when we do the mixed-use bylaw discussions. So people can see high density, lower density, big property, small property, just for the sake of discussion. And Jeff Speck has been hired to conduct a phase two of the Rotary Conceptual redesign for us. This time, he is teaming with a traffic engineer to kind of figure out more of the technical details and to further design his concepts for us. But that's all I had, Mr. Chair. It was a very light couple of weeks.
Any questions for the further director? Hearing none. So still have six minutes, so I'd ask that we vote, make a six-minute recess.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will reconvene at 6:30. Hearing, Mr. Court.
Yeah.
Read it.
For the last time. Case site-2025-03 requests for site plan review approval to construct a four-manufacturing warehouse in commercial buildings. Combined total footprints, 4,5,936. 398, and with 398 parking spaces at 3:30 Chestnut Street. Source parcel ID 18-38-0, located in the industrial garden park zoning district, African Vincent Chio, 1260 Stelton Road, Piscataqua, New Jersey 08854.
So this is a continuation of the public hearing, so I just ask that I have a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. I believe that at the end of the last meeting, Mr. Pill asked that the traffic engineer representing the fields of Chestnut would have an opportunity to review the agreement and give some final comments. So. Mr. Pill.
Thank you. Our traffic engineer, Robert Micho, is here, and I'll just turn it over to him. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Chair and board members. For the record, Robert Micho, Managing Principal of MDM Transportation Consultants based in Marlboro, Massachusetts. Last I spoke to the board, I opined on the need to take a deeper dive in some of the analysis that was done, particularly for the Chestnut and Shaker intersection. The applicant at the last hearing actually presented the framework of potential improvements to that intersection. We've had an opportunity to look at those improvements in a bit more detail on our side. And we've issued a letter dated to last week, October 30th, that highlights several remaining concerns. Principally, that what's been admitted by the proponent, which is absolutely in the right direction, is not supported by any technical analysis. There's no capacity or queuing analysis that would demonstrate how those potential improvements might work, whether or not they present a sufficient improvement in operating capacity of the intersection, for instance, by adding the right-turn lane on Chestnut Street and modifying the left-turn lane on Chestnut Street. Whether or not those improvements, from a safety perspective, are appropriate, meaning is the geometry that's envisioned ample and adequate to support the commercial activity, truck activity, that would be generated through that same location, not only current industrial use trips, but those additional trucks that would be generated by retail property. There is no evidence of swept path analysis that would support those proposed improvements. So we've actually done that exercise ourselves, and I'd ask through the chair that our exhibit one, as it's published in our letter of October 30th, be shown on the screen so that I can illustrate some of the concerns.
Sure.
So I'll defer to Rob to have those posted. What's shown here is swept path analysis of a larger tractor trailer WB67 design vehicle. You'll see on the left side of the drawing, that's the Chestnut Street North approach to Shaker Road. Shaker Road is from bottom to top of this particular diagram. The gas station is in the upper-left corner. You'll see in color format, in orange, trucks that were modeled on the proposed improvement plan that was presented by the proponent, the applicant. In the darker blue, the actual swept paths of the trailer body, as well as the cab. And it may not be entirely clear based on the scale of this, but you'll see that as vehicles would be making right turns from Chestnut Street onto Shaker Road, that particular movement today is already constrained, and there's already evidence that even smaller tractor-trailers have to hop the curb to make that turn, avoid sweeping into the opposing left-turn lane. This exercise shows clearly that you have at least the same encroachment on that same corner, in fact, more than what currently A designed, and that raises that vetted, evaluated, analyzed. It could stand to create an even It could stand to create an even greater impact, if you will, to maneuverability. That's a principle finding, and we believe that it's incumbent on the developer, the proponent, to advance an improvement at this location that fully addresses the maneuvering needs of these types of vehicles as it would be generating increases of these types of vehicles through this very location. We'll also point out that, again, no operational analysis was submitted for this. We're pleased to see that there's an attempt to add lanes, which probably would enhance capacity and allow the signal to work more efficiently. But there's absolutely no analysis to support that. And we would request that the board ask the applicant to provide that analysis so that there's a comprehensive view of what these improvements actually do. Third point that we've raised is one of, and this relates to the redevelopment agreement and the underpinnings of what that agreement is about. Improvements that have been shown at a very high level concept are estimated based on the redevelopment proposal, the funding proposal, to be somewhere between two and three hundred thousand dollars. There's absolutely no basis for that that's been submitted to this board as part of the public record that would identify whether or not that cost range is at all appropriate. My own experience with very similar projects in the Commonwealth that have been recently built is that the potential costs of these improvements would necessarily have to account for the design and permitting, which in this case would be somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars, potentially more, just for that aspect of it. That the cost estimates would need to account for police details, contractor mobilization, as well as the actual construction of the work. And this type of project doesn't happen overnight. They typically extend over a one to two year period. That there are cost escalations that naturally occur over that time period. Because this form of improvement, which really entails a widening of Chestnut Street, modification of curb corners and potentially drainage impacts, potentially impacts the signal equipment, et cetera, that this particular project is not so large that you can easily estimate it using average unit bid prices from projects in the Commonwealth. Smaller projects like this tend to be more expensive to build simply because of economies of scale. So we would request that the board make a request to the applicant to provide a detailed accounting for how they are estimating the potential cost of implementing this improvement to not only include design costs, but also reasonable escalation assumptions that would relate to a construction period over a multi-year period. The final point we raised is that notwithstanding the lack of basis for those costs, the funding amount, that the premise of the reconstruction agreement is that the town is responsible for implementing these improvements, not the developer, not the applicant. That places the onerous of implementation squarely on the shoulders of the town, with the potential for cost exposure that goes well beyond what is currently drafted as a funding cap within that agreement. Again, there's no basis for the numbers that are presented here, but assuming, even assuming that they're reasonably accurate, that squarely puts the entire responsibility of any cost overrun on the town. And there's a distinct possibility that as it's currently drafted, the project gets approved, it gets built, it becomes operational, that the improvements that are shown conceptually aren't built and will not therefore support industrial use of the property, particularly by these larger vehicles. So there are a number of complicating factors that we see in how this agreement is currently drafted. I do a lot of work with private sector developers, logistics facilities, warehouse developers. It is highly unusual for a developer to propose a project of significant impact and not to take the responsibility for implementing the improvement. You should not be shouldered with the responsibility of offsetting the impact of a project based on an unsupported funding amount and the uncertainty that that raises. So that's the extent of what we've commented on. Summarize, we would highly recommend that the applicant submit appropriate supporting technical analysis that shows what the improvement actually achieves. Secondly, that they revisit some of the geometry to ensure that trucks can actually effectively use this, that they provide supporting evidence of how much this improvement might actually cost inclusive of design costs. And that the board consider very carefully the structure of the redevelopment agreement and not necessarily succumb or agree with the premise that the town take the responsibility for implementation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions from the board? So I would ask a representative from the town, who, so essentially at the end of last meeting, we turned the agreement over to the planning director and the town manager to apparently meet with the developer, come up with those numbers, to have a discussion. Is there someone from the town that would like to address the agreement?
Suppose it's more appropriate for the applicant to address the testimony? Somebody's got to do it.
I wasn't at that meeting, but I can address the couple of comments that were made on the agreement figures that came up.
Sure.
Thank you. Attorney Rachel Fancy here on behalf of the applicant. Song Meadow Redevelopers, working with the office is at forty six Center Square, Song Meadow. I was not at the meeting in question, but I am generally aware of the topic, so I can't verbatim say what occurred at that meeting, and I'm not necessarily fully briefed on it. But touching on a couple of points that were just mentioned. First off, the last time when the agreement brought up, it's labeled draft because it's not a finalized agreement. There are many steps that need to happen for it to become finalized. If additional funding were needed or something that the town is not laid out in the agreement, that would be added in. Additionally, what was mentioned last time is we were providing the first option in this draft to the town so that they could take the onus. It's their town. It's not our intersection. What we might decide for that intersection might be different than what the town and its residents would want for that intersection. That said, and I did say, and I believe this is in the minutes, that if the town wanted, the developer would take that back on, which is why this is a draft agreement, and we are free and in change it as needed. This would obviously be subject to reasonable conditions, subject to this site plan. The other thing that I think was to be highlighted about this agreement, which was brought up, is there's a lot of things that we need to do or we need to investigate that were just brought up tonight while we're here, not brought up that we need to address previously from the opponent or their engineer, that they would like us to address in this agreement when in reality it's just us putting out a base point of where we can start. Those are supported numbers. We do have those based on our engineer who can touch on it if needed. It's not we pulled their number out of a random hat. It's a very similar number to what we had previously utilized in a prior agreement. So these are supported numbers. If the town, in their reasonable opinion, feels that that number is insufficient to support what we've proposed, I think obviously they'd be in their right to request additional funds to make that reasonable. I'd like to additionally add that, you know, this is as of right use. It's a warehouse use in an industrial district. The purpose of site plan review is not to reconsider or deny allowable uses. It is to impose and regulate reasonable conditions such as the agreement.
We're talking about the agreement.
But that's my point, is to expand the agreement as needed. It would be a terrible agreement if the redeveloper only comes up with every single provision that the town agrees to.
Thank you. Yeah, so just to give context, you referenced the meetings. The applicant reached out to myself in the town manager's office just to discuss reshaping the conditions and this draft agreement so it can be brought to the board for further discussion. So obviously, these documents are now finalized. You have a list of conditions that are in your permit application reports towards the end. I believe there's about, I think, twelve to thirteen conditions total. Obviously, the board's going to go through them tonight, one by one, which is definitely in the board's best interest. As for that draft agreement, we provide guidance on the applicant on behalf of the town in terms of what the town wants to see from this agreement. But obviously, those discussions were meant to be contained tonight's input from the public and from the board. So that's basically what happened. And your day. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to be heard on this matter? We step forward. Okay.
From Smarji Bird from six five. Everybody keeps talking about this.
You speak into that louder. Thank you.
Talking about this being as of right use, which I understand. But I was looking at the Song Meadow bylaws, chapter four fifty zoning, which says, in addition to restrictions appearing elsewhere in the zoning bylaws, no use of the industrial garden park district land is permitted, which is objectionable by reason of noise, odor, vibration, smoke, hazardous nature of the operation, or any other reason which may render the use or occupancy of the land and buildings objectionable. So even though it's as of right, there could be reasons why it might be objectionable. And I've also heard a lot of people say, well, you know, the people who decided to live industrial park knew that this could become an issue, but the town of East Long Meadow also zoned our residences as residential land. So I feel like the town of East Long Meadow also has an obligation to protect the residents who moved into houses that were zoned by the town. Just thinking about that. And the other thing is, has anybody talked about the intersection of Benton and Chestnut? I missed the last meeting, so I might have missed all that, but just my thoughts.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, attorney for Fields of Chestnut. Just briefly, Chair and members of the board, because this goes back a couple of years. I believe what the member of the public was referring to, I think it's section four point five, the additional section that sets out criteria for industrial garden park. Since it started, the applicant has completely ignored. Yes, they have focused on site plan review criteria, which I believe are in Article nine, but the additional criteria, and I believe it is in four point five, but that's what the member of the public was just reading from, have completely continuously been ignored. The other thing is, it doesn't just say warehouse. It says wholesale trade and operations warehouse. Our perspective is a wholesale warehouse means that goods can only be provided to retailers, not to retail customers. And we can argue back and forth about what that meaning means, but what they, that severely limits what they're talking about. Furthermore, what counsel just said about conditions, but you can't deny, is not accurate. The case law makes it clear that an intractable problem not only justifies but may require denial. And I respectfully submit that so far you haven't heard sufficient detail, particularly the documentation, the backup documentation that was not submitted, that Mr. Michaud asked for, that I'm asking for now, that the applicant apparently is declining to provide. And I hope that the board will require that all the documentation, the supporting documentation that Mr. Michaud asked for, the board will require that to be submitted. So it goes into the public record, which right now it is, it is not. And that unless and until that happens, the Chestnut Shaker intersection is and remains a potentially intractable problem. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Just would like to make one comment on the legality piece that was just mentioned. The piece that's established in case law is in a footnote. It has never been held in any case that I have ever found, nor has Mr. Pill, I believe, found, as we've gone back and forth on this issue, as to whether or not there is such a use that is so problematic. Just like to point that out, that the contemplation is simply that, a contemplation that there could be such a use that is so oppressive to exist. And I do not feel that that is the case today, and I feel that the information submitted to the board towards that.
Oh, I, we are not going to debate a potential issue that the courts would decide because we are not a courtroom. We are a planning board. I would ask, this woman would like to speak. Feel free.
I, Paris Oxon, Ford Field Drive. Every day I drive down Chestnut Street and take a right onto Shaker Road, and I don't see where there's twelve feet to increase that lane on the right-hand side other than taking down that brick building where there's electrical work and that house. Is that person that owns that house here, are they aware of that? That's what they proposed the last time, they were going to take twelve feet to make another lane? How, I don't know how that's even possible. Does anyone else see land there that I don't see?
Can't see it. Can't see it. Nope. There's no specific answer for you. Sorry.
Yeah, I drive it every day, and I say, where are they going to get twelve feet?
Go ahead.
There's not twelve feet.
Got it.
So to clarify with regard to the intersection improvements, there's an existing right of way that includes ample area and width for different turning movements to be adjusted. I was at the, to the last point, I was at the meeting with the town. We had a number of discussion points, as what Chilla had mentioned. We did talk about the conditions. We did talk about the proposed mitigation. The proposed mitigation was discussed as the town's intersection, which it is. It is the town's intersection. It is, we are one of probably hundreds of sites that contribute to this intersection, as well as the Fields of Chestnut, which has a significant amount of traffic generated, granted passenger cars, but a significant amount of traffic. So we all contribute to that intersection. The proponent has taken upon themselves to provide half a million dollars for not only design for what Mr. Mashad is looking for, but also for the mitigation for this intersection. We are a component to the concerns. We are not the concern itself. We are part of the problem, potentially part of a minor increase to a potential problem, but we are not the problem. We talked also about conditions, timing. The town said that they didn't have enough time potentially in the agreement. We talked about, I think initially, three years. We then talked about eight years. Because the town doesn't know if and when and how they want to do this mitigation project. There's a lot to it. There's a lot of study that's required. We acknowledge the comments from Mr. Mashad. We acknowledge the comments from Mr. Pill. We understand that although they are not a peer review engineer, they are the opponent's engineer. We understand that they have concerns. We understand that specifically. So we've addressed that. We provide this mitigation fund for the use by the town should they so choose. So we have provided this information. Mr. Pill talked about an intractable problem. You can't have an intractable problem if you're using the intersection every day with these vehicles. So is it perfect? It may not be perfect. Can we improve it? Yes. Is there funds being provided? Absolutely. Is there an intractable problem at that intersection or with this project? Absolutely not. Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard on this matter?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Emily Byrd, twenty five Broadleaf Circle. I've lived in East Long Meadow for sixty eight years and have served on several town boards. So I truly appreciate the difficult balance this board works to maintain progress and preservation. I'm speaking not only for myself, but for many residents who deeply value the thoughtful, deliberate approach this board has consistently taken in guiding our town's growth. We all recognize the need for economic development and the importance of industrial space in our tax base, but responsible growth must be compatible, informed, and transparent before approved. At this point, there is one critical piece of information missing. The applicant has not identified an end user or defined use of this very large warehouse. I find it difficult to believe that a developer would undertake a project of this magnitude involving major demolition and building entirely on speculation. Unidentified known user will have unknown impact. Without knowing who will occupy this building, the board and residents can responsibly assess essential impacts. Truck traffic, operating hours, noise, and potential environmental and air quality concerns. As we all know, there are warehouses and there are warehouses. A small regional distributor is one thing. A twenty four hour logistics hub, hundreds of truck trips is quite another, having totally different impacts. Approving a project of this scale without knowing its specific use is in effect authorizing a mystery operation in our community. How can compatibility and impact be evaluated without this information? We're not asking you to reject growth, only to ensure it's done responsibly. The most reasonable path forward is to either defer approval until a tenant or defined use is identified or condition any approval with clear limits. Caps on truck trips, hours of operation, lighting, buffering, et cetera. In short, approving an undefined warehouse places too much uncertainty on residents and the town. Decisions made here will shape our town for decades. Once the impacts are felt, they will be part of our community's daily life for the years to come and cannot be undone. Please protect the integrity of the planning process and the character of our community by requiring a known use before moving forward. How can you approve use without knowing its true intensity? Thank you for your time and your continued service to East Long Meadow.
Thank you. That was very well said. Thank you. Just one thing I do want to point out. There is absolutely no obligation by the developer to tell us who the tenant is going to be. It is determined by the use, and as we've posted boards up here, these are the uses that are allowed. And you kept referencing warehouse. Warehouses are allowed use in this zone. Just wanted to put that out there. Anyone else like to be heard on this matter?
Ron Berger.
Sir, there was a woman walking up before you.
Hi, Ellen Silverstein, fifty nine Fields Drive. I have a letter from another resident who isn't going, going to be able to be here tonight, so I'd like to read it. It's addressed to Mr. Denver and the other members of the board. My husband Timothy Sheehan and I, Sheila Goggins, live on twenty six Fields Drive in East Long Meadow. Upon retirement, after forty years of living in Boston and Lowell, we deliberately decided to move to Western Massachusetts because of its lack of serious traffic congestion. Instead, it offered easy access to woodlands and farmland that we miss by living in large cities in Eastern Mass. By luck, we found East Long Meadow. Enjoy the conveniences of a small town, jumping into our car to share a cappuccino and pastry at La Fiorentina's, or to have dinner at Center Square Grill. My concern tonight is the four buildings and associated traffic plan for the property on Chestnut Street. I understand the need for economic growth in East Long Meadow. Growth is good, but usually there are inevitable unintended consequences such as noise pollution and air pollution. This specific business decision could negatively affect the future for our families, friends, businesses, and our community. Imagine how today's decisions will impact what East Long Meadow could look like in ten, twenty, or thirty years from now. What will Chestnut Street and especially Shaker Road possibly look like even a decade from now? What will be the possible consequences to a redesigned rotary and walkable downtown image recently discussed at the town council meeting? Will these desirable goals be achievable if East Long Meadow evolves into an urban highway rather than a community of people, businesses, friends, and sustainable growth? Thank you for allowing me to share my opinion, ideas, and concerns about the potential impact on a town that I now call home.
Thank you. Mr. Berger? Could be the last one.
Again, Ron Berger, eleven Broadleaf Circle. I had sent a email after the, I think, two meetings ago. Just asking about developers claim that they had used conservative estimates that two, two of the buildings would be used for distribution warehouse and two would be used for light industrial. And their traffic estimates were based upon that. The way I see it, they can't have it both ways. You can't say you don't know who the tenants are and call that a conservative estimate. To me, a conservative estimate is assuming that all four will be distribution warehouses. You, you assume the worst case scenario and base your decision upon that. And I don't know if that has changed. Have they updated traffic? Traffic predictions or? Or is it still based on two distribution and two lightware?
I believe it is.
Those few.
Yep.
And you, you're okay with that?
I have not made a decision yet. Okay?
All right. Well, thank you.
But, but I will tell you, and I've said this over and over and over again. The, and you know, I don't like to refer to the old project, but I'll refer to it as the old project. And I've got these numbers seared in my brain that the estimate back then was three hundred and sixty eight tractor trailer trips a day. They have now come in and have anticipated a number of one hundred and ninety five to two hundred tractor trailer trips a day. To me, that is a considerable reduction in tractor trailer. And I will refer to you, Mr. Berger, because the very first meeting years ago, what seems, when I had brown hair, instead of white hair on this. You, yeah, you walked across the audience and said, it's all about truck traffic. Because I asked at that meeting, when there was going to be a proposal for four hundred units of housing, not one individual from the Fields of Chestnut or the surrounding neighborhood came to any of those planning board meetings. You said it was all about truck traffic. So according to their proposal, they've almost reduced that in half. Almost. So I'll leave it at that. So i- if you have something new and you want to offer it, would you please step forward now? Because like we did at the last time we went through three thirty Chestnut Street, in the event, if we vote in favor of this, and I said, if, we wish to discuss potential conditions that we want to put on the project before there is any other action. So I want to make sure we leave time for this board to discuss any potential conditions. If we go through the conditions and if there is then a vote, it would include the conditions on a vote either in favor or if it's against, the conditions obviously don't apply. So if you have something new, we'd love to hear from you. Maybe one or two more speakers.
Hi, Larry Life, thirty six Fields Drive. I won't reiterate the letter that I sent to the board. I'm sure you shared it and went over it.
Can you state your name again?
Larry Life. Again, the, I've seen all the discussion about traffic. You know, the Chestnut Shaker. But again, I would guess that close to fifty percent of the traffic would be going the other way up, up Chestnut to get to ninety one, one way or the other. And that, that intersection with Benton, Dwight, and Chestnut is really already a pretty crazy place. Individual trucks have trouble. If you have close to two hundred trucks, maybe a hundred trucks going that way, I haven't seen any solutions for that. I've been to several of the meetings and I haven't seen any traffic studies that represent that intersection. That just concerns me an awful lot. Thanks very much for all the work you do.
Thank you. One more before we discuss conditions.
Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening. I'm Mark Sullivan from twelve Clover Lane. And I don't want to be redundant of what Larry just spoke to and the other resident before, but I think two meetings ago, I mentioned about, you know, we're doing all this analysis, all this evaluation on Shaker and Chestnut. But somehow we are leaving out in the equation the Benton Drive Chestnut Street corner and a left-hand turn coming off Benton onto Chestnut by a tractor trailer is dangerous. Okay? Mentioned at the last meeting by several people. And I guess my question, and Larry just referenced it again, my question through the board, to the developer, or to anyone is specifically, are we going to do anything about evaluating that intersection to the degree that you've evaluated Shaker and Chestnut?
So you just saw a presentation by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. So Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is utilized by the town to do traffic counts and studies and so forth. So they are involved with the town, looking at various intersections. And I want to take people back because the original presentation on this one, as well as the previous one, there were slides that were put up that showed anticipated movement of vehicles and specifically tractor trailers. And as they left the premises, so many went left down to Benton. So many went right up to Shaker. So many went down Shaker toward Enfield. So many went up Chestnut Street. So many went into the Rotary. So that was discussed at length. All that material is part of the public record. And that was put out there by the developer, what their proposed findings were on all of that. There was also a discussion at our last meeting on, they rank the intersections by A through, I believe, A through E or A through F. And I believe the number that at Benton was efficient with respect to all national standards as operating efficiently. Now, I don't drive that intersection every day, so I don't go through what you're going through. But the question is, was it studied? Yes, it was.
So just a follow-up question through the board. There's no intention of the planning board requiring the developer or somebody to do a specific analysis to the degree that you've done to Shaker Road and Chestnut.
So as I just discussed a few minutes ago, where we will discuss potential conditions on the site plan. That may come up. It may not come up.
The last comment, and I'll sit down. If you don't do anything there, you know, regardless of all the statistics that say trucks go this way, that way, whatever, you're making a monumental mistake by not addressing that intersection or truck traffic.
Okay, I'm going to take it, I'm not going to close the public hearing, but I'm going to bring it back to the board. So this board, in conjunction with the planning director, Mr. Wachilla, went back, we looked at the proposed conditions from two years ago. You might remember there were many. In a minute, Mr. Terrell is going to have to read the proposed conditions into the record. Unfortunately, I had to do that. And I think I hadn't done that much reading since freshman in Cathedral High School. Did you remember? Yeah. So we are going to, and, and the things that people have referenced over the last couple of meetings, we have incorporated these suggestions into as many conditions as we can. But some of these are going to sound very familiar from what has been spoken in the past, but it is a requirement. At least we put these into the public record. So these were developed through discussions with our planning director, discussions he's had with town departments, et cetera. So right now, I'm just going to ask our clerk, Mr. Terrell, to read the proposed conditions.
Sure. Eight seven. And red. Yeah. Yep, there you go. I'm jumping ahead. There. All right. Proposed conditions. A, this decision of the planning board is to be recorded at the Hampton County Registry of Deeds within the chain of title of the affected property and noted in the registers, renters indexed under the name of the owner and the subject land upon which the proposed use is utilized. B, if applicable, prior to the commencement, commencement of construction and operations, all required permits must be in proper order and provided to the town building commissioner, fire department, police department, Department of Public Works, and Board of Health for review and acceptance. C, planning board shall have the authority to modify, amend, or review if approval of the site plan or written application of the owner, leasing, or zoning enforcement officer provided. However, such action is consistent with the purpose and intent of the town of East Long Meadow zoning bylaws and public hearing has been held. D, the site shall be constructed, altered, or used only in conformance with the approved plans of this site plan review. Any changes to the plans approved under the site plan review approval shall require the applicant to file for an amendment to the site plan review or to inquire with the planning department in writing whether the change is substantial enough to require a new filing. E, the site plan review approved approval granted under the section shall, shall lapse after a period of one year has passed. Substantial use has not, has not sooner commenced except for good cause or in the case of a permit for construction. If construction has not begun by such date except for good cause, this period shall not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of any appeals to the petition. F, upon completion of construction, developer, East Long Meadow Redevelopers LLC shall reach out to the director of planning to coordinate a site visit. The purpose of, of this site visit is to ensure compliance with the approved site plans for this site and and site plan review petition. This, this site should visit shall occur no more than six months post-construction and prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. G, directional signal markers, including but not limited to wayfinding signage, painted directional arrows and painted lines shall be installed throughout the parking lot, loading docks, and driveways. H, on-street parking in connection to the developers, East Long Meadow Redevelopers LLC proposed development is prohibited at all times. I, the entirety of the Redstone Rail Trail, which abuts the developers, East Long Meadow Redevelopers LLC property, must have adequate screening. Any landscape buffering must be maintained in good condition at all times. J, all idling trucks on site are required to comply with Massachusetts State Law on Stopped Motor Vehicles, MGL, Chapter ninety, subsection sixteen A. Prior to demolition of existing structure, the developer, East Long Meadow Redevelopers LLC, will conduct an air, conduct an air quality study to establish a baseline to measure future impacts against. I, double I, conduct a study of ambient noise to establish a baseline to measure future impacts against triple I. Submit a road and control plan to the East Long Meadow Board of Health for their approvals. L, thank developers, East Long Meadow Redevelopers LLC must work with the town of East Long Meadow to change the existing flashing pedestrian crossing sign located on Chestnut Street from button activated to motion activated. M, a written agreement relating to public infrastructure improvements along Chestnut Street and the intersection of Shaker Road slash Chestnut Street is attached to the decision and incorporated herein as Exhibit A included in board's meeting packet. N, the developer, East Long Meadow Redevelopers LLC, shall develop and implement a transportation demand management, TDM, program to help reduce the overall impacts of passenger vehicle traffic on the adjacent roadway network and direct truck traffic to regional roadways designed to accommodate it. I, the developers, East Long Meadow Redevelopers LLC, must consult with Pioneer Valley Transit Authority, PVTA, to evaluate the needs of service at the site as part of the transportation demand management program. to evaluate the needs of service at the site as part of the transportation demand management program.
So, members of the board, uh, discussion on the conditions, if any. Do you ponder this? Anything?
No.
Okay. And I'm gonna just give for context the following. So the agreement that was discussed regarding between the Town of East Long Meadow agreement to fund infrastructure improvements proposed. So um, they are, and please correct me if I'm wrong with the numbers, but it appears that the developer will fund an amount not to exceed $500,000 for the town to use in its discretion for the sole purpose of reconstruction of State Street, or excuse me, of Chestnut Street, uh, as required, three hundred and three, essentially in front of the building. The construction of an extended yet dedicated left-turn lane on northbound Shaker Road, south of Chestnut, and a dedicated right-turn lane on eastbound Chestnut Street, west of uh, Shaker Road. The construction of additional safety measures for the crosswalk located along East Long Meadow rail trail which crosses Chestnut Street. So, there are funds being put together. It appears that the numbers associated with that are the cost on um, extend, also extend the dedicated left turn on north, on northbound Shaker Road. So the total cost, again, would not exceed $500,000. So um, Mr. Sullivan, I think, raised a very valid point, as long as a number of others, or a number of other individuals have indicated. So I would like to add a potential condition that um, that we, really all we can do is ask the Town of East Long Meadow to engage Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to review the status of, the current status, that has not done so in the last number of years, of the intersection at Chestnut and Benton, with an eye toward improvements in the event the planning board approves this proposal. Rob, discussion?
You're adding, you're adding more in.
It's, I'm, just talking, you're gonna, you're talking to.
You're adding more in, and the $500,000 um, doesn't seem to be sufficient if anything has to be done down the other end. So how do we, well, I'm not.
Clause in that says that they, they will spend more than $500,000.
I, I'm not making a proposal that the developer be responsible for any potential improvements. I'm asking that the town engage Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to give a current assessment of that intersection.
Right.
With an eye toward, if this project is approved, toward you give a recommendation on other improvements that might be necessary to it for the additional truck traffic. I'm not asking the developer to spend more money.
Okay. I don't think that $500,000 will, will go very far. My son-in-law runs at the, I know the figures and what asphalt costs and what cutting costs and relocating pipes costs and what you have to do at intersections, be taken apart to meet the current safety standard. So I'm just concerned that we might be on the hook for a little bit more money. That's my concern.
So, um, Mr. Chair, I have a question for you regarding the condition you just proposed. So, just to understand the gist of it, you're asking the town to consult with Pioneer Valley so we can decide what mitigations would need to take place at the Benton Drive and Chestnut Street intersection. Am I correct on that?
I am asking them to provide the town with recommendations that might be needed in the event that this project is approved and fully, you know, implemented, fully rented out. I'm, that's all I'm asking.
So the condition, usually you'd worry it to put the burden on the applicant, but in this case, it seems like you're asking the town to do that.
So I'm asking the town.
Yep.
That's all we can do, is ask the town. If the town council say, no, I don't want to do that, and that's up to them.
So I think.
You know, we, we have asked the town in the past such things as, you know, as example, we had to approve the sighting of the new high school.
Yep.
And we felt there were issues across the street on Melwood. We asked the town to consider put no parking signs along Melwood during school hours. So that's essentially what I'm trying to get through.
Okay, yeah, and, you know, we could definitely, it's definitely a good idea to include that as a condition, but I think uh, just for the sake of guiding future policy for that area and to look at that intersection, the condition would more be so as a reminder for the town to do that, because as soon, if this were to get approved, I would probably reach out to Pioneer Valley tomorrow to start those discussions. So that's something that the town would definitely take the initiative on. But it's, yeah, if you were that as a condition, I would say it would be more as a recommendation than a.
But I, I think it's a very reasonable request.
Yeah, no, it's understandable.
Do you want to add something? I just, but just to follow up, I think all we're doing is looking for recommendations. We're not saying that we're looking for mitigation funds from anybody. But we need to know what's, if they see any potential issues down the road. I think that's what, that's why I think it's important to put this condition in there.
Yeah.
To address some concerns that we heard about.
Understandable, and I think, um, you know, typically with conditions, you put them so the applicant can comply further with the approval. But in this situation, the condition is just for the town to have that process in place for the sake of this petition. Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
Okay, so we could definitely, or as a condition, if the board wants to add that.
So, you know, I'll reopen to the public if you have any discussions, any comments on some of the proposed conditions.
Margie Berg again, sixteen Fields Drive. You read through really quickly, there was a lot, but there was something about a benchmark for air quality. And so if that's a condition, I'm just trying to understand how that works. If that's a condition and there's a benchmark study, we're not gonna see how, the, we're not gonna see a resulting change until or unless this project is built. So at that point, what happens if it's a negative? If it's a really negative change?
So.
Have to comply.
Have to comply. They have to comply with state standards and better standards. Period, period. That's not something this court can get involved in, so. And you know, I, I want to bring people back a minute. So you have XL dryer, you have the old, you know, I don't know what they call it now, American saw, and saw. You have Carta Monday, very interesting article in the Wall Street Journal last week, that Hasbro has ramped up, uh, their manufacturing of games again at Carta Monday due to the tariffs. So there's a whole lot more truck traffic running through Carta Monday than there was two months ago. Um, so there is truck traffic there. And it is running, and some of it's running 24/7. Sir?
Paul Gagluducci, thirty-five Fields Drive. Just a clarification, Mr. Chairman. Asked, you put in a, a recommendation, uh, for a look at the Benton Drive Chestnut Street area. I'm confused, let's assume that you vote yes on this project. Are, are, or are you going to wait until you get a response to that question before vote? That's, I, I'm a little confused as what happens.
So I am asking the town, and when I say the town, um, it's, I imagine the town manager in conjunction with the town council, our recommendation to them, that in, if we, if we vote favor of this project, that they seek out Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to make potential recommendations for improvements to that intersection based upon, you know, what we've seen here with the anticipated numbers and traffic.
So. And so you've then bought the project. Then the town would then ask Laura Pioneer Valley to look at things. Laura Pioneer Valley, let's assume, come back and say, yes, uh, it is a very dangerous situation, and it will cost $1.5 million to fix that to the project, and the town said, we don't have $1.5 million to fix it. What happens then?
That's a decision of the town council to either spend the money or not. They could bond it, they could pay it out of free cash stabilization fund. There are methods, should the town believe that it's necessary to implement those, those, or those improvements.
So we could have a project, nothing done to either one of those intersections.
Mr. Gagluducci, you know municipal government is better than I do.
Okay.
So.
So I, I, if I might just share with you, um, if you're familiar with the intersection on Wilbraham of Stony Brook. Yeah, Stony Brook, um, Road and Springfield Street, the Town of Wilbraham is considering, uh, is on their plans to do something with that intersection, and they're estimating the cost, uh, at $1 million. Thank you.
Benske's nineteen Clover. Um, what is this, what if the scenario is it gets approved and then the tenant does not, or the company does not comply with the, if the estimates are incorrect, say, of the intersections of Shaker and Chestnut? There's something's wrong, or if there's major, the, the volume is more than they anticipated, or the, they find out, uh, that the intersection is not as big, even though they make it bigger, that it's not big enough, as was pointed out in the, uh, the study that was shown, what is that, what happens in that scenario?
So in the event, if the numbers are just off by a mile, let's just use that scenario, okay? It's then incumbent upon the town to take steps, if they believe it's necessary, to make improvements to that intersection, and they would have to seek funding probably through the state, um, infrastructure projects, a bond, et cetera, et cetera.
That could take quite a lot of time, just, you know, identifying it and then hearing it and then planning it and, and estimating the cost. That could take years, it sounds like.
It could.
Thanks.
That's, that's it.
So we're gonna, I, I think we're going to be the last speaker here.
If we uphold three seventy-five Chestnut, need this board accepts developer, goes through.
Hold on, we are not accepting a developer. We're approving a site plan. There's a, there's a huge difference.
Then, correct me if I'm wrong, but there is the potential for truck traffic to be 24 hours, seven days a week. Is that potential correct?
Yes, and that's the, and that is an ongoing potential for all the other manufacturing facilities that are in the industrial garden park district. All right, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion on closing the public hearing? None. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, we're to the point. I think the, we did not take a vote, and I'd like to take a vote first, on the proposed conditions as amended. So can at least someone get it started by giving me a motion to approve the conditions as amended?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on the, um, the conditions? Hearing none. All those, all those in favor of the proposed conditions as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Hearing none. So, to the main, to the main motion, to get discussion started. Do I have a motion to approve the site plan with conditions?
So moved. Mr. Chair, I mean, interrupt you, but you have two other approvals first.
Do before you get to that one. And what is that?
So the first approval is to accept and deny the findings made for site plan review, understand as per review, which is included in this packet, as well as approving or denying a requested waiver from section four fifty five point six F one, which I can explain to you very quickly if you'd like me to.
Please do.
Right, so the requested waiver is from a section pertaining to additional parking specification for businesses, commercial, and industrial uses in regards to landscaping. So the applicant is not in compliance with section four fifty five six F one, in which they need 12% of the total parking and circulation areas to be devoted to landscaping. The applicant was only able to provide 11, so they are off by one percentage point. So you do have to approve that as a requested waiver.
And what is your recommendation, Director?
The applicants originally submitted a plan to me that didn't have any landscaping in that area, and I requested heavily with them that they put landscaping there, especially in the loading dock areas, which I think the applicant has done a fantastic job of doing. Um, within reason, they're able to get trees in there. About, just look at the plans down there, that's about 10 trees in total, and the landscape. I think the fact that they can get up to 11 is pretty good, so I think the board, uh, would be favorable in making that recommendation.
Thank you.
Rob, how far, how much is 1%?
For this site, probably, I'm gonna let you estimate that one, you're the landscape architect here. How, how much do you think 1% of landscaping in the parking area could be in square footage?
I don't know. Minimum.
The 1%.
I gotta hang up before. So 1% is probably.
Two trees, three trees, you know.
Probably go, the tree or two.
Yeah, okay.
If that.
Well, it's, I don't think it's huge.
But you still have to approve the waiver requests for the zoning bylaw.
Do, do I have a motion to approve the, um, the waiver request?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, that passes. So, um, go ahead, Rob.
So the next approval that you have is to accept the site plan review standards for review. Uh, a section that's pulled off of, I will give you that in one second, so that comes from section four fifty nine point seven, site plan review standards for review, the board has to accept them.
Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? None. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, uh, the main motion, uh, with all conditions.
Um.
And the agreement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Including the agreement.
Which is includes the agreement. So, um, I know that very early on, I said I wanted a very clean transcript in the event that this is appealed to the courts. So my request is to have each board member, prior to the official vote, indicate the reasoning on why you will vote one way or the other. You don't have to disclose how you're gonna vote until vote is taken. But I would like you to discuss your thoughts on, um, the reasoning you're going to make a decision, one way or the other.
Can we give our decision or not?
You can.
Okay.
You'd like to, you can start, Mr. Punderson.
Good evening, I'm Pete Punderson, planning board member. I want to thank everybody for all the input and all the time you spent as residents of East Long Meadow. It shows how much you care for our great town. I've lived here 74 years. Most of the places was dirt roads when I was a kid. I also want to thank the people from East Long Meadow Redevelopment Corporation for listening to concerns of the town and concerns of the planning board. You did a great job. And I appreciate you coming back with a somewhat altered pro, a plan, a plan that definitely reduces the truck traffic. During all our discussions, we have laboriously gone, uh, put together all these conditions. Having these conditions gives us some control over what really goes on at the site. Without them, we have no control whatsoever. If we were to vote this down tonight, there's a great possibility that East Long Meadow Redevelopment LLC go to land court and seek relief from a negative vote. At that time. At that time, a judge in land court could say, it is an as-of right use, which it is, everybody has to understand that, they are allowed to do what they want to do, and they've been gracious enough to listen to us and let, let us have these conditions put on the property. If he says, forget about it, he hasn't listed all conditions, we have no control whatsoever in what goes on over there. They have to comply still with the, the vast laws as far as pollution and noise and things like that, but it would be detrimental to the town to not have some sort of control over what goes on over there and the degree of what the impact can be in the town. I still believe that this project is too big for the town, and I believe that there's a potential for too much truck traffic, and I think there's a potential for some safety conditions for the public and for people on the roadway. For those of you that have come to these meetings, you know that I voted down, voted this down twice. I now have changed my mind because I firmly believe that we need to vote in the, in affirmative here in order to keep a possibility of keeping control of the area. So, I will tell you right now, my vote is yes.
I want to reiterate what my fellow board member, Mr. Punderson, just said, thanking everybody for doing due diligence on this project. I was not a member of the planning board when the previous project came before the planning board, but I sat through the meetings, and I took notes and I listened intently to the pros and cons. I fully understand why it was voted down because it was a massive, massive project. I will tell you tonight that I am voting in favor of it for two reasons. In my mind, they have, they have cut down almost in half, and it's been noted tonight, the amount of truck traffic potentially entering and leaving the site on a daily basis. They've also addressed traffic concerns at the corner of Shaker and Chestnut, and also speaking to the conditions, we have put in a condition to take a look at the other end of Benton and Chestnut, or Benton and Dwight, excuse me, Benton and Chestnut and Dwight, for possible recommendations with no commitment. I understand that, but I think we're moving in the right direction, and to reiterate, my fellow board member just said, with these conditions, we do maintain, maintain control of what goes on in this warehouse. It's not like they can do whatever they want, they still need to come back before us in the future. Thank you. Yep. So, believe it or not, I'm the youngest member on this board, and I have young kids myself, so I'm, I'm vested in this community. I've not been here nearly as long as everybody else on the board, but I'd like to think we'll be here for a long time. I know progress sometimes is difficult, and I think that they have done a good job of coming back with some revisions. Some of the concessions that they've made to help us with the intersections, though I would have to agree, probably won't cover the total costs, are certainly a help. That is not something they're required to do, that is a gesture towards us, and I do appreciate that from their side. I, I have made it clear that I'm, I'm not pleased with the traffic situation, I realize that is going to be a hot point, and that really seems to be the issue, not necessarily with the site, that is away from the site itself. And again, they have done great work in trying to mitigate that and work with us, the engineers and such. So, again, for their site that they are currently working to develop, I think they have made some good concessions from the first round. Again, I was not part of that, so this is my first go around with it as well. So, there's been a lot of best efforts, I would say, no, nothing is perfect in this world, and this board sees a lot of things that are not perfect, but we have to make some decisions. What we look at today, the site is a mess, right? There's a lot of hazards there for many different ways you can look at it, so we'll now have a clean site, opportunity for more jobs, and of course, more tax revenue, which this town could use as we continue to make improvements to our infrastructure. So, with that being said, I also would be a yes.
So, so I was on the board with Mr. Punderson the last time, and I did know. But I want to point out a couple of things. So, I went back just to check this, so I can go back to LCAT and review this. So, at the very last minute, I asked Attorney Fancy, could the developer make this project smaller? And she was not, and it was really an unfortunate question for her, because she wasn't prepared for that, and she had not spoken to the developer, and the answer was no. Another woman, I think two meetings ago, said we should use our gut, and I pointed to the things that are up here on the boards that we need to go by. And that last time, in my gut, I just did think that the project was too big. And contrary to what some people had put in writing, this is a different project. The square footage has been reduced by almost 100,000 square feet, so almost 17 and a half percent. It is not one giant warehouse, it's broken into four different buildings. The anticipated, and we mentioned this last time, no one really knows if we're gonna have 500 trucks or 100 trucks. So, we need to kind of get off of that number. But, the anticipated, according to the, the projections, is you've reduced the truck traffic from 368 to between 195 and 200. That is a substantial proposed reduction in the amount of tractor, tractor trailer traffic on that, on that roadway. The proposed mitigation, Mr. Mishout has said, yes, that goes a long way, that's very favorable, and I agree. To me, that's kind of the icing on the cake. Putting a $500,000 is a nice gesture. I am not naive to believe that that's gonna cover the entire cost, but it certainly will go a long way to kind of help this project. So, I will say that I have changed my mind, and I too will be voting in favor of this project. So, do I have a? Whoever it is should be quiet.
Oh, by mine.
So, enough. So, not that it's. So, ma'am?
No, you don't.
I do not.
The public hearing is closed.
Yeah, the public hearing closed. So, do I have a motion to approve?
I'd like to say just one other thing.
Go ahead.
In case I did include the proponents' counsel, thank you.
I have a motion to, make sure I get this right, the site plan with conditions and the agreement. Okay with that motion?
If you want to reference the permit number, it's site 2025-03, for Chestnut Street. I could say the motion for you if you.
I have a motion to approve the site plan for the construction of four manufacturing warehouse and commercial buildings, combined total footprint of 455,936 square feet with 395 parking spaces at 330 Chestnut Street, assessed parcel ID 1838-0, located in the industrial garden park zoning district. Applicant Vincent Pacino, 1260 Stelton Road, Staskaway, New Jersey, 08854. Conditions in yet? With the conditions and the agreement.
The agreement.
Yep, as amended. So, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. This matter passes. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion.